I call the regular city council meeting of October 20th, 2021 to order. If you would do a call. Yeah, if we could do the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag and I as states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now if the clerk would call roll.
Mayor Copeland is absent. Tom Baylor.
Here.
Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Jeff Gard.
Here.
Melina Meyer.
Here.
Ann Schaefer.
Here.
David Allison.
Here.
And David Gleason.
Here.
That's a quorum of council.
And do I hear a motion for the approval of the regular.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Nope, we got an amendment there on, what did they say it was?
Sixteen.
Under new business, item number sixteen, that should read lot ten, block six, not block two. It's right in the packet though.
Got that. So do we have.
This can be a clerical.
Yeah, yeah. Clerical, yeah, okay. So move to approve the agenda as corrected clerically?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Disclosures of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications.
Um, I'll just, yeah, on one of the agenda items, on item sixteen there, one of my properties is mentioned there, and my name is brought up, but I don't have an agenda, or I don't have a conflict, but it, I just wanted to bring that out. I do own the property, there's no way I'm making money out of any of this, but just, just to throw it out there, and you may hear me speak and refer to it.
Okay, I don't see any conflict, so we'll let you participate in that. Communications by and petitions from visitors, guest speakers, anyone from the incident management team on the line? I see, yes.
Honesty Saunders is here.
Oh, hi, Dr. Saunders.
Hi. It's much different than the previous updates that we've given over the last year and a half. We have four active cases, we continue to do well locally, and are positioned and ready to give boosters as they're authorized, like the FDA has authorized boosters for Moderna and A&amp;G, so we have guidance from the CDC, and expect authorization for children aged five to eleven to be coming in November. I'm here to answer any questions if there are any.
We'll quickly go around the room. On the phone, Councilman Meyer, do you have any questions for Dr. Saunders?
No, no questions, just thanks for all your work.
Councilman Gard.
No questions, thank you.
Councilman Allison.
No questions.
Councilman Gleason.
No questions, thank you.
Councilman Schaefer.
No questions, but thank you.
Councilman Baylor.
Yeah, just a comment. I was recently on a trip where I was guiding some gentlemen from California, and I told them I had my booster shot, and they were all amazed. They were in their seventies and they were unable to get it yet. So what a great job our staff, or city medical staff and City of Cordova has done, and thank you very much.
And I'm gonna just ditto that, because I just had a visitor in from Colorado, and she's going home and waiting, and waiting, and waiting to be tested, so. Anyway, thank you for calling in, Dr. Saunders.
My pleasure.
So next is audience comments regarding agenda items, and it's limited to three minutes per speaker, please. Anyone in the audience want to come forward?
Yeah, my name is Kim Hager. I'm a 4.2 mile white shed. I'm here to try to settle this dispute, acquire the land that's, we thought we had at one point. But anyway, we're here, we made an offer on it for 10 grand. Somehow, the assessors assessed the lot, the city lot, a 5.00, which is not in sync with anything else in the neighborhood, not even close. What I've been doing is calculating, right on the outside of fence, their unit price is 2.25. And if you take the square footage at that rate, which is, you know, I believe is fair, I mean, you look around, our lot's the most undeveloped lot, it's basically, it's swampage, there's a road up above, so a lot of water flows through there. And I don't know why they want to take this high number, even the assessor has admitted that something's wrong, it's all gonna be fixed, as I'm bringing everything more, in either raising everything double, or bringing everything more into sync. So anyway, the square footage is 5,567 square foot. And if you use the formula X store, the unit price of 2.25, that equals 12,525 bucks. If you take what's on the cards, the tax cards, Arnie, the assessor, has said that 30% is the swamp land. Well, if he took that and you eliminated, it'd be down to 3,890 feet, which would at 2.25 come to 8,752 dollars. And if you went to the minimum, 20,000, 20% for the creek in the area that's fenced off, I mean, there's a drainage problem there, and there's a culvert runs across, and that's fenced off so that nobody can get to that culvert and bog it up, whatever, it'd be a total mess. Well, if you do, if you go 20%, that brings the land down to 4,454 square feet at 2.25, which is, on one side it may have 2.25, and the other side, which is different, it's residential, is 2.26. I'm not sure how they calculate that. But here I am in the middle, they split the lot down the middle, I got 4.88 unit price, and the piece that I'm going for, 5.00. Well, if you take off 20% for the creek that's fenced off, it comes down to 4,454. At the same rate that the neighbors pay next door, 2.25, that brings it down to 10,021 dollars. And I think this is fair. We've been going on with this since March, and the last thing we went through was waiting for the assessor to come up with something. That was October 6th was the key date. That didn't happen, and apparently he didn't, he wasn't privy of the new survey that was done in June. Samantha had a new survey done, and that shows the fence, the swamp, the area where the creek runs down, whatnot. And after talking with Ernie, Arnie, he says, yeah, that makes a big difference, I should have had that. Well, anyway, now we're at the point where the planning commissioner wants to postpone again, and wait till they come down and do another survey. Well, this has been going on and on and on. I think it's more unfair to take my offer and use the formula that the property is in the area, and there's nothing in the area that even comes close. Now, I don't know why they raided this city property, which is the worst in the whole Old Town area, at 5.00 per square foot. It just doesn't make any sense at all, but that's what happened. And there's just, you've seen it, it doesn't make any sense. And if you look through your packet, you'll see that, actually, Kevin put on there, showed the different properties in the area, and you'll see where I have the thing that Leaf Davic gave me in the very beginning with, saying this was my property, both lots, and I broke it down to what each lot is paying. And I just stated that, they were 2.26, right next to me, 2.25. And in all fairness, we just took that number, we could get rid of this. I, I, I'm probably going over my three minutes, but, you know, it's, you look at Old Town there, it's kind of at the bottom of the hill. And to have that property value just more than double, I don't know if the city council plans to double all the values in the city, or what, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense, especially at this time. Right now, this property we're talking about, it's not the golden zone, it's, I put a bunch of really loose fill in there, so we could drive in, and most of the time, there's about six inches of water, to eliminate some of the stuff that was on the property, fishing gear, whatnot and stuff. I don't know, I'm just, I think this is very, more than fair. You look at surrounding properties, and, and I don't know why Arnie did this 4.88. One thing that comes to mind is 4.88, if you take it and you multiply it by the total land value of lot six, it comes out to the same price as, comes out to, right around 2,200 square, or dollars, or 22,200. And that's with adding on the shack, it hasn't been there in years. I don't know, and now we're talking, bring in the attorneys, start over again with the assessor, la di da di da. Well, I mean, this has been going on since March, and it just seems quite ridiculous to me that we just can't settle this. I noticed, I asked Kevin to give me whatever he had that he was gonna send to the city council. Well, I got it, and it mentions here, move, number one, accept Mr. Hager's counteroffer to dispose of the property for 10,000 plus costs incurred, and then it goes on, there's some other stuff involved, you know, two different things. At the end, it says, there's one, two, three, four. The second one is, Mr. Hager's offer is fair value for the property due to site condition, or whatever, or use a different value, you know. I understand what he was doing, he was taking that 5.00, and using that value, and it just doesn't kick in for this. It doesn't work, it doesn't make sense whatsoever. You'd have to study the cards, which I never knew those cards, I dug them all out, for all the properties in the area, and nothing's like this. This is, something totally different. He wants 29,000 at that rate, 5.00. And actually, I have a cheat here, I guess I more or less told you what it is.
Mr. Hager.
Minus 30%, that'd be 8,700. If you take 20%, 20% out for the creek, that brings it down to 10,021 dollars. And this property is totally, there's a fence, on the other side of the fence is 2.25. I don't want to keep saying the same thing.
Mr. Hager, will you be present during the discussion?
I'll let.
Mr. Hager, will you be present during the discussion as we move forward?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
I hope so, past my bedtime.
Some of ours too. Are there any other members of the audience who would like to comment on agenda items at this time? Okay. Chairpersons and representative of boards and commissions, is there anyone online from the hospital?
This is Hannah, still on.
Hi, Hannah.
Your hospital.
Different hat.
The hospitals continue to post positive months and really improve our financial stability, that identifies some key things of how we've done this, because it certainly is a big change from how we've been operating in the last many years. And hopefully, many of those people in the community have noticed we've improved our billing practices. We changed from having an offshore coding company, we now have a method coding company that's needed, and improved our getting accurate patient bills out. We've been really working to hire and train locally to fill some of the gaps, including nursing gaps that we have, so that we can stop using premium labor. For the hospital, when we have travelers or in licensed positions that we can't fill but have to have, we end up using staffing agencies, and those come at a really high premium. Over the last year, we've been able to decrease our staffing agency use to very, very little. We have hired unit parts, and so those are the people that do the initial registration and make sure that we're accurately capturing insurance information, that's made us a different difference for us. We've also hired occupational therapy and workday, and our rehab services, and adjusted our pricing strategy, which is able, enabled us to get better reimbursement. So all in all, these changes are coming together, and we've been able to have positive or very thin margins, which is excellent. I'm really looking forward to the future as we adjust our cost report, and are able to really catch up from the past. At this point, though, we are able to, really close to feeling like we're gonna confidently be able to fund ourselves operationally. The one thing we have not been able to fill the gap on is some of the depreciated capital or infrastructure that we have not been able to either improve and/or that are now current life safety code violations, they weren't when the hospital was built, but now they are, and we have to address some of these major infrastructure changes at the hospital. We are asking for 2022 to still be in the state budget, but I think that things are looking very bright for the hospital, and our ability to continue and maintain operations is looking good. I'm here for questions.
Counsel, are there any questions for Dr. Saunders? Councilman Gard.
Hello, Dr. Saunders. Off the top of your head, do you have any dollars to attach to some of the capital projects you're looking at, needing at the hospital?
Really, the most pressing thing is a life safety issue that is our generators are located inside our mechanical room, and we need to get those located outside. I, ballpark is several hundred thousand dollars on this project, but we don't have estimates of it yet. Like I said, it's, some of those deferred things are things that we're just unable to wait on, and at this point, we don't have operational savings to be able to do it. So, yeah, I'm guessing that one's probably three or four hundred thousand dollars, similar to what the underground storage tank was, but we don't have a solid number today.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Saunders? Seeing none, we thank you very much for your report. Do we have a school board representative online? I don't believe we do. So move on, in your packet is the Prince William Sound RCAC September meeting highlights. Any comments, questions? And then Prince William Sound Aquaculture Board of Director, report from Mr. Baylor, Councilman Baylor.
Yeah, thank you. So on October 15th, I attended their fall board meeting, it was via Zoom, so this is always tricky. We have some newly elected executive board members, and some of them were serving and got reelected, and I think we got some new ones here, which is always nice, we really have a nice Cordova representation there, which is important. And Tom Carpenter is the chair, Mike Babic is the vice chair, Eli Johnson, Tracy Newsy, Newsy?
Mm-hmm.
Darren Gilman, Brett Badford, and Tom Nelson. And the alternates are Mike Mickelson and Justin Ryan. So you'll recognize a lot of those Cordova names, which is great to keep that Cordova influence on that. Also serving a full-time position as of this spring is Neil Wright, in the assistant production manager position. I think some of you may know Neil, he's been around Cordova, he's, I think, part of the Losi clan, married the Losi girl, so they have those Cordova connections. So it's nice to see a Cordova resident with family, working for Pizwak, staying in town, which is, which is always a plus. And plus, it gives somebody a local contact for some of the fishermen to see. The existing board and staff at the meeting had nothing but high praise for the job Neil is doing, so that, that goes well. There's several positions available, posted on Pizwak.com website for jobs, so some of these are full-time, some are seasonal, so if you know people looking for work, maybe college students wanting to come up for the summer, it's a great opportunity. I had a nephew do that one time, and it was great. So at this time, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. And we have a written student council report in our packets, it was great to see that, and I love the fact that they were reporting spirit cases rather than COVID cases. Moving on to approval of the consent calendar, anybody want to pull anything out?
We don't have anything.
Hearing none?
I'll take the roll.
Okay, thank you.
On the consent calendar, Ann Schaefer.
Yes.
Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
David Gleason.
Yes.
Tom Baylor.
Yes.
Jeff Gard.
Yes.
Melina Meyer.
Yes.
And David Allison.
Yes.
The consent calendar's approved.
Okay, approval of minutes, we're in the consent calendar, consideration of bids, we have none. Reports of officers, mayor's report, did, and Clay didn't submit anything, don't we know?
No.
Okay, so we'll move on to the city managers' report. Helen.
Thank you. So in your packet is a financial report, year-to-date as of September 30th. I want to acknowledge that we are still making journal entries and posting corrections, and we'll hopefully have a very complete financial report for you when we do our budget workshop next week on Wednesday. So I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have, and, and/or you can wait till next week, when hopefully some of those questions will be eliminated, or bring them up to me now, and I'll write them down. If I can't immediately answer them, I'll make sure that they're addressed next week, or email me questions about that. Yeah.
Where are we at in the audit?
The audit is a very slow process. I believe we're now looking at the middle to end of November before we see that document. So I haven't seen a draft, they're still asking questions, they still have, they're still gathering information, so they are not near completion.
Councilman Allison.
Yeah, I got several questions, I guess, that I'll, I'll put in an email to you, Helen, for, for next week, but I guess my big concern, I'll repeat it from last meeting, is that I need to see account balances for, for all of these accounts, and I'd like to see the balances that are in all of those other funds, too, like the ambulance fund, the depreciation fund, those funds that we've got thrown into, you know, we've got them all grouped into, into one, but we've got them, you know, there's numbers for, for each of those, I'd like to.
Sure.
Know what those balances are.
Yeah, that we will have those definitely for the, the budget work session. This is just an idea to give you how our operating budget is, it's only a focus on the operating budget, not on the enterprise funds, and not on the bank balances and all that sort of stuff, and that will be provided next week, so I will make sure that's available.
And I, I'm not above letting the auditors know that we can always go out for RFPs.
We will be going out for RFPs. We are going out for RFPs.
Can't get things done.
Yep.
Sooner, and I'll make the same, similar comment later on when we get to another agenda item here, but anyway, yes. I guess the only general question I had regarding these numbers here, these, they don't include probably most of the third quarter sales tax and public accommodation taxes, those kind of things for a third quarter.
Right, because they, they need.
In October.
Yeah, they arrive in October, so what you see here is actuals through September 30th, so it doesn't reflect any billings that were due, or payments that were due after that date.
Okay, I didn't, I just, I.
Yeah, so there's some holes.
Figured that, I didn't want to make assumptions.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I'll send you a list of questions for, that may or may not be addressed before next Wednesday.
Councilman Schaefer.
Yeah, my only question was trying to track, like, the expenditure, or the revenue from the, like, the federal COVID grants that we got, like the CAREs and ARPA, and then how the expenditures associated with that, that like, weren't necessarily part of our budget, but were from those grants, that was what my question was.
So I will say that we are still cleaning that up, and so by next week, I will have better numbers for you, both on the revenue side and the expenditure side. There, we did not follow normal procedure with the federal dollars that were coming in through ARPA and CAREs, I think, just, we weren't set up for it, so we didn't, we, we could have done better in terms of how we accounted for those dollars, and so we are, we are cleaning that up right now. I've contracted a third-party CPA to provide that high-level support that we need to help make sure everything's happening. They are working directly with the auditor to answer questions and to make sure that the information that we are providing is accurate. the information that we are providing is accurate and correct for the auditors, and I expect that we will. We're going back and forth with some of the ways we reported things, and those will all be corrections that will be reflected in the audit, and I will capture any of those things that we can for the conversations that we'll have next week at the work session.
Any other questions, counsel? Councilman Schaefer.
What's the longer-term plan moving forward for the finance?
So we restructured the finance department to provide on-the-ground daily support for accounts receivable, accounts payable, and Barb Weber moved, and we did some restructuring, and she's now serving as comptroller, and it's not our finance director. We don't have that high-level position, but she's functioning as a finance, she's doing a lot of the finance director types of activities, journal entries, da-da-da-da-da, and then contractual person is going to provide monthly support to make sure that the financial statements that you all need to make decisions are accurate and reflective of the work that we're doing here at City Hall. So I think that's the short- and long-ish term solution. As you have noted over the years, we've had a real hard time attracting finance directors to this community, and we have not always successfully deployed them in our community, and we're kind of suffering from the last finance director right now. So we're looking for a reasonable solution that works, and I think this is probably the best we can do. So the person we've hired, who will just come in once a month, will be functioning sort of like a dean, but instead of being here five days a week, you know, day in, day out, doing the work, they'll come in and take all the good work that our team here has and make sure it's reported back to you all.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the manager on finances? And Helen, did you want to comment on the budget schedule?
Yeah, so I know that in an ideal world, and hopefully that will happen next year, we would start this process a lot earlier, but here we are, end of October. So next week, Monday, maybe sooner, I'm very actively working, the team's actively working, I'm putting a budget together that will hopefully hit your mailboxes, inboxes on Monday, if not sooner. Works, first work session, which would be next Wednesday at 5:00, proposed, certainly you guys could make adjustments to that, but at that time, I would present the budget and go over all the information that I think you would, might need, and then, and then from that point on, you can, we'll dig into it deeper, but I would present the budget to you and answer any questions you have. And what the budget, as I said, we're draft budget is almost done, and it's reflective of all of the department heads providing what they believe to be essential service, and that includes staff increases in some cases, like what you heard the fire department reflect, equipment, capital expenses will be in a separate budget, will not be before you right now, we're just looking at the operating budget, because with the Biden administration's federal stimulus infrastructure bill, there is likely to be opportunity for us to apply for grant funding for a lot of the capital things that we're looking at, or some of them anyway. So that capital budget will be released later. And the other thing is collective bargaining. So we are going to be meeting within the next week with the union and starting that process. I know that, and the union knows that no agreement will be approved until council ratifies whatever it is that is being proposed, so they know that there's a board or council step involved in the approval of the, and ratification of the CBA. So we will, I think, we've got a really good relationship with the union right now, we're in regular communication, they know what some of the issues are, we've had initial conversations, so I think we will have that agreement in front of you at the first meeting in December. So that's the hope, if not sooner.
Councilman Schaefer.
Sorry. Would it be possible, when you present or send us the first draft of the budget, to include, like, a summary of what the department heads have given to you for, like, reasons for increases or increased personnel, et cetera, like, if we were able to see those summaries to understand the rationale?
Sure, so the way the budget's being presented is last year's budget is the base, and then there's a middle column, which is the increases, and so those will reflect what department heads have asked for, and I'll see if I can't provide that narrative as well. Some of them, I met with folks, we went over their budgets, and so I don't have always the narrative that you're looking for. I will try to get that together, but if not, I'll provide it at the meeting, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the city manager? Right, seeing none, we'll move on to the city clerk's report.
I've included in here the flyer that I have around town about board and commission seats, so maybe I'll just keep putting those in packets, and hopefully that'll get some play, and I started to get a few applications in, so that's good. And then the agenda item coming up about whether or not to put the ballot prop from my last report is on this, and that's kind of what I was working on, as well as these two land sale, land disposal items, you know, Kevin and I have been back and forth a lot, and Tina, so it's been taking up some of our time, and that's all I have to report.
Redistricting, you want to mention that meeting again?
Oh, when is that again? November 1st at 4:00 to 6:00, redistricting board will be here, and I still haven't gotten the exact details from them, but we'll get it advertised as soon as we know more, or I know they are in touch with the Cordova Center staff because of, you know, that they're having it in here, so I think it's on pending agenda, it's on my calendar, too, so hopefully that gets some talk.
I just want to reiterate to the community that redistricting happens once every 10 years, and it defines who our representatives are going to be, what legislative district we will be in, and they've redrawn boundaries, given six different proposals are out there for review, and there'll be an opportunity for, the redistricting board wants to hear from the community about what our preferences are. And just so counsel knows, I did reach out to NVE, and they are meeting on Thursday, I believe, tomorrow, to discuss those proposals, and I've shared what our interests are, and they're more than happy to work with us, so we'll see where they're at.
Susan, was that everything for you?
That was it, yes.
Thank you, Helen, for reaching out to NVE. So we have staff quarterly reports. There includes the city investments, UBS Financial Services. Anybody flag me if you want to mention anything. Cordova Museum and Cordova Center Department, Volunteer Fire Department, Police Department, Harbor and Port, and the library. And we're all good, okay. Correspondence.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Baylor.
Yeah, just on the city investments, the UBS Financial Services. We've talked about it, and I still believe we should be going out for an RFP on that. We just kind of give it lip service here, we keep talking about our investment committee, and we're going to do it, we're going to do it, it doesn't happen, so I think staying over 10 years with one company, regardless of what their service they're providing, without doing an RFP is a mistake. I encourage us to move forward with that.
I think that has been echoed before, and I am also in agreement with it. Correspondence, any comments on correspondence? Oh, Mr. Gleason.
Yeah, the chapel's letter is, they bring up a lot of embarrassing and interesting points in that letter, so I'm just curious if we actually really did charge them property tax all those years they owned it, for the whole lot. And I realize that our current planner is inheriting this, so no offense if I.
The short answer is no. We do have two tax cards, we have one for the east portion, one for the west portion, since they're both Lot 10, it's just east and west portion, so they have only been getting taxed on their specific lot. They believe they've been getting taxed on the whole lot because of that unit price difference that there is with those other lots, and so since their unit price is higher and the other unit prices on the other lots are lower, it gives the appearance that they've been being charged for the whole lot based on that, but they have not. They've been being charged for one lot just based on what it's assessed at.
So what's the different, why is it different on the unit price? So I don't have, you know, I don't know much about that, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I was going to go over that more when we get to the, that agenda item. There's an email from the assessor where I brought that to his attention, since it was brought to our attention, because we don't necessarily look at every single tax card every single year and notice, oh, there's these differences. And just the short answer, until we get into it then, is he said, oh, yeah, you're right, the other lots are actually undervalued and need to come up, the two city lot, or the city lot and the Hager lot are at the correct range.
Okay, well, like you said, we'll chew on it a little more here when we get to it, but I appreciate your answer there.
Any other comments on correspondence? Seeing none. We have no ordinances and resolutions, we have no unfinished business, we have new and miscellaneous business. The first item on the agenda is council direction to staff concerning placing a proposition for a charter change on the March 1st, 2022 election ballot.
So moved.
Councilman Allison.
I moved to direct staff to prepare a resolution for council's consideration for approval of city charter change ballot language to accomplish a change in the way council members are elected from designated seats at large to at-large.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so we'll begin discussion. Councilman Allison, to your motion.
Yeah, we've gone through this a little bit before. I think when this initially came up for election in whatever year that was, '94, something like that, there were several things combined into one ballot option, and that included going from six members on the council to seven, including taking away the mayor's ability to vote, except in cases of the permanent fund money. Anyway, all those things were tied together with designated seats. I don't believe that Cordova's big enough to have designated seats. I mean, we don't, especially since they aren't designated as, you know, Whiskey Ridge, White Shed Road, Division is my seat, and, you know, Tom Baylor's is this other seat, you know, we just got seats A through F, which makes absolutely no sense, and we need to encourage people to run for council, and a lot of times, that's a discouragement to have to run against your friend or your neighbor, so I think we would be better off having at-large seats like we do for hospital board and the school board. Take it back to that, don't combine a bunch of, let's not messy it up, let's just have that issue on the ballot for this thing, so I support bringing it up to voters for a vote.
Councilman Schaefer.
Councilman Allison made all the points that I was going to make, so I am supportive of this.
Okay, so we'll go around the board. Let me start with Melina. Councilman Meyer on the phone.
Yeah, I'm in support of this going out to the voters. I don't personally have a strong opinion one way or another. I think those are all good points that Mr. Allison brought up, and, yeah, I think it's worth having the voters look at and possibly change or stay the same, but it's, I'm in support of it, thanks.
Okay, Councilman Baylor.
Yep, I support the comments that were made, fully.
Councilman Gleason.
Yeah, I support, too.
Councilman Gard.
I may be the only naysayer in this, but I'm not doing it too vocally or too strongly. The arguments have been made, have made a great amount of sense, but we're in a time of, to put it politely, divided politics in America that have filtered clear down to the basement with us. The proof is kind of in the pudding, is where we're sitting now. If you look at the council, the council has, with what we have now, has stayed a very good representation of the populace as a whole. We have conservative viewpoints, we have liberal viewpoints, we have communist viewpoints, we have fascist viewpoints, I mean, kind of jokingly, but we cover everything pretty well the way it goes. When you have a single seat that you've got to run people for, it has kept a very good balance in the council now, and I'm afraid we could lose that traction and not keep everybody, all the viewpoints in Cordova as well represented as we do now in the council. So that would be the only reason I'd be hesitant to do this. I mean, anything we do should always have the approval of the voters, so I haven't got any issues with doing that. That's how democracy works, but the proof of the council that we got now, it kind of proves that what we've got works. So if it's not broke, I don't know that we really need to fix it. That's all I got on that one.
And I get to be last, and I'm going to also vote against this because I'm in favor of having the option to express different opinions against someone you might be opposing. And I, but I will honestly be happy with whatever voters decide, but I liked being able to choose to run to make a balance on council.
To target somebody?
No.
Okay.
To make a balance, to speak for the other side.
If I may.
Mr. Baylor.
I guess if we were making policy, well, a good one would be the mask mandates, and that's, that was just totally, you know, a once-in-a-lifetime thing, hopefully, so that affected people personally, and there was discussions on that. Most of our work is budget. Do we buy a fire truck? Do we build a building? Pass a budget? Do we hire another police officer? Do we sell a piece of property? These are not social issues, so I would totally disagree. I don't agree with the assumption that it's a left-right-center thing. It's like, what's best for the community, and we seem to do it. So I think you'll get more people running for council, I think for this, you know, because it's like, I don't want to run against this person, but I'd like to get on and just throw your name in a hat, nobody likes to lose. You take the, whatever it is, three, four, two highest vote-getters, and you seat them, so, well, that's, I'm glad, it looks like we're going to let the voters decide, and I will go with whatever they decide. That's, that's great, thanks.
Susan, can I just ask, what's the cost of this in terms of an election charter change? It's your work, I know.
Yeah, I mean, maybe a little bit of my time and attorney time, but otherwise, we're putting it on a regular election, so it's not a special election.
It's not special, right, okay. All right, any more discussion on this? We've been around once. Susan, why do you do the, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Gleason.
Just ignore me.
I'm sorry. I got to remember to go right-left, right-left.
I just, I got to reiterate what Tom's saying, you know, the highest vote-getters are going to be the ones getting the seats, and that's what the, that's what the town wants, so that's what I like about this. It's, and I do like the fact that I think that more people will run also because it's pretty tough to get, I don't know how many people are gonna want to run after what we just went through. So, I mean, seriously, you know, it's, it's a tough job. So I, I'm still, you know, I'm just in favor of this.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, none of us signed up for this one.
Call for a question.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Kathy Sherman.
Uh, no.
David Gleason.
Yes.
Jeff Gard.
No.
David Allison.
Yes.
Tom Baylor.
Yes.
Melina Meyer.
Yes.
Ann Schaefer.
Yes.
Motion carries five, two.
Okay, and then we move on to, let's see. Number 15, council action on proposal for Lot 11 Block 5, Odiac Park subdivision. And there's information in your packets. Do I hear a motion?
You know, I've read this and read this and read this, but I don't recall seeing where there's some motion actions. Please help me with page.
There is one on 117.
117.
117.
So I move to have staff use a different method for determining a fair market value and publish a new RFP with the adjusted value.
I'll second it for discussion.
To your motion, Councilman Schaefer.
Yeah, so really I was just bringing it up for discussion to ask about, I've got questions. So asking about how the fair market value, well, how it was determined and how it would be done differently and if we would just do it differently for, in this one case and not moving forward. Yeah, so just clarifying the determination of fair market value for this property and.
Kevin, thank you.
Okay, yeah. So the fair market value for this property was determined through a licensed appraiser. And due to not getting any RF, any proposals that actually met the minimum asking price, staff wasn't sure if that it was because other people in the community did, also thought that the asking price was too much for the property. And so if so, then should we consider having it either reappraised or our code allows us to use assessed value, which we would then typically tack on the state sales ratio, which is a average number where it, it takes what properties have sold for in town, what they're assessed at, and what that difference is. So those are options. And otherwise, we could also, sorry, you could also decide to just not dispose of it at this time as there was no proposal for what a licensed appraiser is saying is a fair market value.
Councilman Schaefer, do you have a follow-up?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Councilman Baylor.
Okay, well, the, what we got from the Plains Zoning Commission, which is kind of unusual, but they reviewed the forward and recommend to consider using different method to determine the fair market value and publish a new RFP. So they're in agreement with the planner that they think they should publish a new RFP. I guess the question for us is, do we use a different method to determine fair market value? On page 119 there on 5.22.110 valuation considerations, it kind of spells out our options there. Prior disposal of any interest in the city real property, the city will determine the fair market value of the interest by using a qualified appraiser, which is what we did, tax assessment values, which were old, comparable property values, which I assume the appraiser did, or any other method the city determines in its sole discretion. This is the important part, calculates the fair market value of the interest. So how do you calculate that? Well, you can't calculate on opinion you think it's worth less. You have to have reasons for that. If we look at the, there are some comps there. I think on comp four is pretty comparable. And again, this is what the guy, the person does for a living. I don't know if it was a man or woman. That's their job, so I'm not gonna rework their work. But that was their recommendation. I guess if, if we have a hard time with it, then we need to bring that person in and sit down with them, just like we do for borders equalization, and try to get it explained. But right now, the lot is assessed at $53,000. Their estimate all-in for water, sewer, electrical, level of lot is $63,000. That brings up the total to $116,000 for a lot that is all level with all utilities, has a beautiful view out the back of a, of a water pond. It's great ice skating, doesn't have a neighbor to look at, ready to build. You build 1,100 square foot home on there, figure around 185 a square, that brings out to 203. You have a brand new house sitting on a lot for $319,000. Unfortunately, in today's economy, Cordova, that is affordable housing. So I look at this and I go, would I buy that lot at $116,000, ready to be built down? And the answer would be yes. So if we're gonna throw opinions in there, I think he's right on, on the, the cost. Now, if you're gonna, you know, if you're gonna build a garage and use it for a storage shed, it probably is not worth that. But that's another topic of discussion. I don't think we sell anything unless it's for residential housing as our comp plan. So for me, somebody needs to point to where we can follow our code to determine the new value, or we bring in the appraiser and sit down with him and, and see if there was a mistake made, which is what we do sitting in this borders equalization, you know, property taxes. We just don't arbitrarily make a decision that's wrong. We bring the person in and we discuss it. So, so I'm happy with the evaluation.
Councilman Allison.
Quick question, the 2.5 and the five that we're talking about per square foot, I'm assuming, is that, is that the difference between commercial and residential?
Yes, the, the residential, that's the next agenda item. So this, we're gonna be talking about appraisal and assessing and just trying not to keep those mixed up. The 2.5 versus five, that's what the, the assessor uses for tax assessment values. And yeah, they're typically, businesses owned lots are assessed at a higher value since they can be used for a higher use than just a residence. So that's where that difference comes.
Okay, I was, uh, we have in the past, 20 years ago and less than a year ago, I think, offered to, to allow them, I think it was mentioned in these comments. I might be getting my issues confused here a little bit. But to, the, the proposer could get their own appraiser to, you know, their own licensed appraiser to appraise that property and give us a, a value that we could have something to argue about. And that, that has been done in the past. And I think we did that, didn't we do that on the recent property for the cycle shop? Or not the cycle shop, but.
I don't, we did do it. I don't remember what property it was. Yeah.
Anyway, we.
I believe we did it, yeah.
Yeah, next to Showsteeds over there, next to Eagle Contracting over there. That sale didn't go through, but that was one of the offers that we, we offered was that they could get their own appraiser. That was done back when Baron Wolf bought the property that Trident's Oil Plant is on now that it was offered to get our own appraiser if we didn't like the appraiser, appraisal that the city came up with. And only thing in doing that is that kind of starts the process over again with the whole, you know, once you have a new value, then, then we're going out for RFPs with that new value listed on it. So I don't think going out for, unless we determine a new value, going out for RFPs again, you know, we gotta have, we have to have a new value to put in on RFPs. And we're not gonna get any different results next time than we, than we do this time. So I guess I too have to agree with the appraiser unless, unless there's some convincing arguments that, that they are way off base. You know, property isn't necessarily always valued at what it costs to make that flat level ground. You know, it costs us a million and a half dollars to build that lot down at, down by the T-Dock, down here at, by the Science Center, costs, didn't cost the city, but it, it costs a million and a half dollars to fill that lot. And, and then what did we value it at? $350,000 or something like that after, after the fact? So you don't always, always get what you put into, to it in the end. But, so anyway, I guess I would be in favor of, of letting them choose their, their own appraiser and, and coming back and getting us a new value and starting over the RFP process with that value.
So just to speak to that quickly, you could have us either have the city hire another appraiser or we could put out the RFP again at the same price. But there could be a clause in the RFP that you could also submit a proposal along with your own appraisal to be considered. Again, the recommendation, that, that was from the city council's discussion because they felt that maybe the cost of the filling the lot wasn't fully considered.
Planning commission.
Sorry, yes, planning commission, it wasn't fully considered. But as Councilman Baylor has pointed out, there is a couple lots that were used as comparables that have sold within the last three to four years that would also need an equal amount, if not more, fill and clearing and grading that have sold for more than what the lot was appraised for. So just something to consider.
Councilman Gard.
I get confused going through this thing.
Speaking to your mic for Melina.
I said I get confused looking at this from about any direction I go. But I keep coming up with assessments and appraisal differentials between all the stuff we're gonna be looking at here tonight. And I understand that assessed value traditionally, there's, try to keep it at 90% or better of what a real value is for something. And if the state's using an 11% differential rate with it, that's right in there. But I look at the values we have on the surrounding lots for all this stuff, and it's hugely different. And then I also look at, I think the original appraised before the offsets came in for filling and stuff for this lot were $63,000. And they were given a $10,000 offset for filling the lot and doing that. So there's a lot of stuff that doesn't meet here in the middle anyplace. And I, it makes me wonder how good a job we're getting from our assessors here from like the next one we're seeing where we have the valuations all over the place from two and a half to $5 or two and a quarter to $5 a square foot for stuff that's all zoned the same, right next to each other.
Well, that's incorrect. So, but we should wait till we get to that one.
No, I'm, I'm just saying.
I'm, I'm just bringing that to your attention. They aren't all zoned the same.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm talking here now. You can raise your hand and tell me I'm wrong in a second. And I probably am wrong. I won't argue that with you, Tom. But explain to me the difference between the assessed value for the lots on either side of this. One, I think, was assessed at $27,000 and the other one was like $32,000?
Something, something along those lines. I don't have the exact numbers. But yeah, it was, one was, I believe, was $26,000 and the other one was around that number. You know, I mean, a lot of things can cause that difference, size of the lot and, you know, other stuff like that. So the assessed value is the unit price, which we'll have that conversation, which truly isn't the main focus that we should focus on for the next item. But from my understanding, the unit price should be fairly consistent amongst the same zoning type. And then the deductions or additions when it comes to improvements, that's what would adjust your tax, the final tax assessed value.
Yep.
So, but for this one, I guess the main point that the, the, the main point that the proposal that we received from, they're just trying to, their, their item that they're trying to get you to consider is that maybe the cost is a little high because of the amount of money they have to put in. However, as Councilman Baylor has also said, that is just, you know, what they believe based on what they want to get out of it. Whereas the appraisal who was done, which was done by a licensed professional with comps that have similar conditions showed that it, the property is actually selling for less than properties that have similar conditions have in the past.
I'm, I'm not arguing about, about that. That's a good point. But our assessed values on stuff should be within 10%, give or take, square footage price. And the lot sizes aren't that drastically different there. And what my thing I'm trying to get at is, is how some places, two aren't meeting, the appraised value and the assessed value, they should not be that far apart.
Markets fluctuate quicker than tax assessments can be adjusted. And so that's something that you have to keep in mind is fair market value isn't a hard number. That number is always gonna be going up and down and different, different outcome depending on how you make that calculation. Whereas assessed values, since those are for tax purposes, those are more of a baseline. And the state, the assessor does try to keep them up. Sometimes they do a blanket 5% across the whole city and bring all, everything up 5%. There's a, I think there was a 10% increase a few years ago. So there's always going to be a huge gap, no matter where you are in this country. Assessed value is typically always drastically lower than what a property will sell for on the open market.
Okay.
Councilman Gleason.
So I guess I look at it and I see a swamp, but Tom is 100% correct in everything he said. And also that we, if we do this for one person, then we're getting in the weeds. And ever, you know, people are gonna, so I'm not saying that that land's prob, you know, I'm not saying that that land's worth what we're asking for it. I look at it and I don't think so, but that's just my opinion. We've, we paid a guy to go in there and assess it, and that's what we gotta go off of.
Appraise. Sorry, we gotta use the words right.
Appraise, okay. Anyways, that's, so I, you know, we have to stick with what we're, what we're paying people to do. Otherwise, why are we doing it?
Councilman Schaefer.
I just have a question procedurally. Is someone able to approach the city with an appraisal, their own appraisal on a lot if there isn't an RFP out for said lot?
They would have to go through, they'd have to submit a letter of interest and it would go through the whole process.
So they'd submit a letter of interest before then going through the appraisal process, like?
I mean, you could technically, I guess, pay to appraise any property you wanted, you know? But if there's not an open RFP and if that RFP doesn't stipulate that alternative appraisals may be considered, then they couldn't just throw out a, a new appraisal at us.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Gard.
Just a point, one thing that I think that would be an important to remember that when we did the alternate appraisal before, I think we put in stipulated language that had to be an appraiser that the city was amenable to using. So somebody wasn't gonna go out and get their brother-in-law to appraise it for him and do that. So if we do end up going down some road like that, I think that'd be.
Yeah, at the end of the day, you'd have ultimate decision on whether to accept that appraisal or not. You could look at it and say, no, we're just not gonna get rid of the property right now. We don't agree with that price. Yeah.
Mike, okay, I have a question. So if we determine that this appraisal price of $53,000 is appropriate, no matter what, a, a second RFP. thousand dollars is appropriate, no matter what, a second RFP will go out?
Not unless you direct another RFP to go out. If you, if you all agree that this appraisal is appropriate, the two options at that point would be, since no, no proposal was submitted that met the price, then we just aren't disposing of the property at this time, and we wait for a future letter of interest. Or we direct staff to go for one more round, see what happens. And if nothing happens, then again, it just goes back into, on the shelf until another letter comes in.
Understood. On the phone, Councilman Meyer, do you have any questions?
I think that discussion has answered my questions. I have a lot of the same feelings that have been kind of brought up. So I, I am kind of conflicted of what to do. I would support if somebody wanted to bring to the table that going back out to RFP if somebody wanted to, if they wanted to pay for a new appraisal. But I also see the point of we got it appraised, this is the price. You know, I think one of the hard realities in this community is that flat land, even land that needs some work to do, is expensive, especially if it's in town. Land is expensive, and we need to be thinking about homes. So I think if it did go out for another RFP, I think that could be a consideration. I don't know. I don't have the floor sheet in front of me to look for it, but that would be worth worrying for me if it was, you know, build a new home or in the community. I think a warehouse or adding on to another home is less than priority. I don't know if that's being a little too into the weeds with the particular proposal that didn't come through. But yeah, those are my thoughts. I think it's a little messy. And it is hard, but the reality is land is expensive in this community.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Meyer. And I think it is, they did say they were going to develop it for a new home. No?
Not.
It just says that they would level the lot for building. It didn't stipulate the exact use of the lot.
Yeah, fully develop with buildings.
Yeah. And that's something planning zoning needs to kind of iron out.
I guess I'm confused because it says here, "A letter of interest was received for Lot 11, Block 5, Odiac Park subdivision with a request to purchase the lot through direct negotiations," and that the lot would be developed for a new home.
That, so that was the letter of interest that they submitted. But then, as their official proposal, there was no mention of a new home being built in the proposal. So it could be insinuated that they are going to build a home, but per the proposal that they submitted, they did not specifically state.
Okay, thank you for correcting me. Is there any more discussion? Susan, I need advice.
Do you want to restate what the motion is? And possibly somebody might want to amend it? Or you can vote on what the motion is?
Okay, so the motion was made by Councilman Schaefer and seconded by, I think, Councilman Allison. "I move to have staff use a different method for determining a fair market value and publish a new RFP with the adjusted value." Do we want to amend or stand with that motion?
I think we want to amend it, or I do. I don't know the wording I want.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, before we?
Sure, Councilman Schaefer.
How burdensome is going out for a new RFP, like that process on staff time?
I would just publish the exact same RFP that we published last time. So not, you know, a couple of staff hours, that's all. Because nothing, unless you direct something to change, it would just be the exact same proposal going out.
I, I'm sorry.
Okay, Councilman Baylor.
I guess I would, my thinking is to refer this back to staff. I don't see a reason to go off another RFP. We did that. The people that were of interest of it don't want to pay the price. They've made that clear. So if it goes back, dies with staff, if somebody wants this down the line, they can put in a letter of interest, and that process starts over again. But.
That would be option three. That's laid out on page one hundred and eighteen.
Okay. So it's, yeah, there you go. Determine that if it's, if it's a fair market value. And not recommend disposing of the property currently as no qualified buyers, no qualified proposals received. I think I would go with that one. I would, I would keep this on our, our land disposal maps. I'd have a price on it. I'd advertise it, you know, just kind of like, hey, but I would let somebody come in and put a proposal. I don't, I don't think there's any reason to go out there again and waste that time.
Would you like to make that in there?
Well, Councilmember Schaefer made the motion, so you can maybe change it to that, or you guys can all vote this one down and then come up with that other motion after?
I would like to make an amendment to the main motion.
That'd go.
You want to withdraw your motion and make your motion number three on page one eighteen?
Yes, I would like to withdraw the original motion. And instead, the motion is to determine that the fifty-three thousand dollar appraisal is the current fair market value and recommend not disposing of the property currently as no qualifying proposal was received.
Okay.
And do we have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Any discussion on the amendment or the new motion? Mr. Allison?
I guess, just for the record, for anybody who's researching this piece of property in, in the future, the Phillipses or, or anybody else, that this is the price unless they come up with a better appraisal that they think is a better appraisal. And that can certainly be thrown into the mix at the time. But, but currently, council believes that this is the right amount without hiring another appraiser ourselves. And, but that's certainly on the table for them to do if they so choose.
And just to clarify, again, this would completely close this land disposal process. It would require a new letter of interest to be submitted. That would go to Planning Commission for a recommendation on disposal method. And then it would come back to you. And based on the conversation you had, you would then open a new RFP at that time.
Roger that.
Thank you.
Okay. So am I gonna take the vote on that? Are we ready?
Just, a minute, sorry. Just to be clear, the motion again, please?
Is that you have moved to determine that the fifty-three thousand dollar appraisal is the current fair market value, and you are not disposing of the properly, property currently as there's no qualifying proposal?
Thank you.
This time, there wasn't. Okay. Jeff Gard.
Yes.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
David Gleason?
Yes.
Alina Meyer?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
David Allison?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Moving on to, let's see, number sixteen, council direction to staff and city land disposal portion of Lot 10, Block 2.
That's Block 6.
Block 6, USS 3345. I knew that was. Do I have a motion? Page one fifty-four.
All right, so I'll put it up for discussion here. "I move to maintain staff's determination of fair market value. And if that price has not met, the lot should not be sold at this time." Well, that's a harsh one. But that'll get us talking.
Second.
Wait a minute, what was, what was just said?
It was number one on one fifty-four.
Okay, on one fifty-four. Okay, got it.
Am I correct? There you go.
Yeah.
Councilman Baylor, to your motion.
All right, well, this is an unfortunate situation, and I hope we can figure out through our code a way to satisfy all parties. But I'm always one that wants to look forward, move forward, pass is the past. But since it's been bought up in several letters and correspondence and in this packet, I feel obliged to, just to kind of address a couple issues here. So I wrote it down just to try to be as quick as I could. No, sometime in early nineteen seventies, the city took possession of the east portion of Lot 10. At this time, whoever is responsible for the duties, for the duty, did not record this property in the tax rolls. So as far as the city tax rolls are concerned, the lot is still Lot, there is one lot, Lot 10. This was obviously a mistake by the city of Cordova. However, when the west portion of the Lot 10 was sold, the purchase, person purchasing it should have recognized on the warranty deed that they were only getting a portion of Lot 10. It also should have shown up when the buyer had title search, which is always recommended, or a survey, which should have been done before the purchase of the property or structure was built on it. An opportunity to, opportunity by the purchaser was missed to correct this situation. This continued until Mr. Hager purchased the property. And again, the statement on the warranty deed was missed by the purchaser, which clearly states you are purchasing a portion of Lot 10. It's not the city's responsibility to proofread any legal documents or get involved in the sale of private property. It is up to the purchaser to do their due diligence before the purchase is made. This was an unfortunate mistake back in the seventies by the city. However, this could have been corrected by the owners and/or purchasers of this property by simply bringing it to the city's attention. So that's moving forward. The warranty deed, as you've got copies of, it clearly states a portion of Lot 10, Block 6. Gives a legal description. It's incumbent on the purchaser to do their due diligence, and they should have recognized that. Now, the issue at hand is how do we move forward? What's fair for all involved? And that, I don't know. And I hope we can come up with that discussion. But if, you know, if you go back to our, on page one nineteen, on our value considerations, we're kind of locked into what they have here as far as determining value. And that's the process that planning took. So we can have that discussion again. Also, it's worthy to note that the property sold far in excess of the valuation. You know, what do we have it at valued at twenty?
Twenty-nine.
I think total valuation of both lots was forty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. The lot sold for seventy-five thousand dollars. So clearly, there was an indication that those lots, lot was worth that. So it's also good to note that that now sets the new bar for the assessors when they look at other lots. Because if that's what that lot sold, that kind of starts setting that benchmark, which again, is like fifty-nine percent lower than the city's assessed value. So I am willing and open for conversation of how we can work this out. I just don't know how. So those are my comments.
As the second, I'm just gonna add in, I'm less informed than Mr. Baylor, but I wanted to have this discussion. So we'll go around the table first, and anybody want to start?
Yeah, I'll start. This is Alina.
Okay, Councilman Meyer, I'll just help him.
I think what Tom said is exactly my, my thoughts. So thanks for driving down and saying them. It's, the reason why this is getting brought up mainly too is because, you know, the city owns that other portion. It's privately owned, and people know what property they own. They pay property tax on it. And this got missed. And hopefully, stuff like this won't get missed when we enter things on maybe a computer or not have them in the card system. Maybe it would. It's confusing because it has the same name, except for one is the west portion, one is the east portion. You know, it, I don't know the bet, how to move forward. And I am looking forward to this discussion. Hopefully, there's some solution that we can come up to. And maybe our planning director, he can offer some insight or has been working on this. So would like to hear from him a little bit about thoughts on how to move forward. But I am at a loss of what to do for this.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Meyer. I'm gonna quickly go to Councilman Schaefer. Then we'll let the planner answer some questions.
I was just wondering, this is a little bit, just for clarification, about the, how the different units or properties in that area are assessed, and like what the situation is there? And is this a larger issue that we need to bear? Or is just this neighborhood where there seems to be this confusion?
So, I'm, I'm not an assessor, so this is with just the knowledge that I have from doing this job and tangentially getting involved in assessing. So we, we went with the assessed value over an appraisal. So I'll kind of answer both your question and, sorry, council.
Councilman Meyer.
Meyer. Based on the conversation that was had at the council meeting to decide to dispose of the lot, while technically the city bears no legal responsibility, there was a sense that we should work within our code to find some sort of an equitable solution. So that is why I chose to go with an assessed value plus that sales ratio. Because as I've said before, assessed value is almost always lower than an appraised value. And fair market value is not a set number. It is a range. So I went with what I thought would still be legally considered a fair market value, but it would be on the lower end of that scale. So since we used assessed value, it was then brought up that, well, if you look at the surrounding properties, why are they assessed differently when it comes to that unit price? I had no answer to that. So as you'll see in the emails, it works backwards technically, but starting on one sixty-three going back to one fifty-nine. I emailed the assessor. I sent him the tax cards for each of those highlighted lots that are shown on page one fifty-eight. And I also sent him the survey that we had done this summer, when it was discovered about this whole situation, because we needed to get a clearer picture on what was really going on out there. And as you can see in his email response, his response was that the, the city lot is being assessed at the correct unit price, and it's the other lots that have been being assessed at a too low of unit price. Why? I have no idea.
I'm sure they're gonna be happy to hear that.
Yeah.
Can you?
Well, but the seventy-five thousand dollar sale price would show you that that is probably true.
So I hope that answers your question. Or at least, that is the information I have to provide to that question.
Are they all zoned residential?
They are all zoned. The ones that are highlighted on page one fifty-eight are all zoned business. That, it's a, it's a weird little pocket of, well, I don't know, weird's not technically the right word, I guess. But that little pocket is all business zoned, where everything that you can see to the left, right, I guess, east, west, north and south, those are all zoned as residential. There is other business zone properties at the end of Chase Avenue, where it wraps onto LaFever, and that whole area is zoned business. But the, this area right here is its own little pocket of business zoning.
So that, behind my north, southeast, west, the lot to the left, which I own?
Would be west.
Is residential?
Yes.
So the lot on the other side is zoned business?
Yes. The six slots that are highlighted on that page one fifty-eight are all zoned business.
Which explains the different factor. Because business lots are taxed at a higher rate, correct?
That would, that would explain the difference between the city's lot and Mr. Hager's lot being at that four eighty-eight and five, whereas your lot to the west is, is being assessed at two dollars and something. Why these other ones that are also zoned business are at this two twenty-five and two fifty, that is where the assessor said that that seems to be a discrepancy and that those are being assessed too low.
They should.
Because, because they're business zoned, that they're not being, they're not being assessed at the correct zoning.
Okay, so that clears up Councilman Gard's, I think, question there was, why is there such a difference? And we have residential and business.
Oh.
Different factors, right?
No.
It doesn't necessarily because, why are these business properties being zoned at what appears to be a residential rate?
Right, I agree with that. And that was corrected on this one lot. But yeah, so then the question again is why aren't these others at, at their business rate?
And that I do not have an answer to.
Right. But that's the reason, is business residential different?
Yes. Yeah, business zoning is typically always assessed at a higher value because it has commercial potential.
So isn't one of those has a house on it, right?
Our business. Our business, our zoning pretty much allows almost any use in any zone, um, with some restrictions, but business zoning does allow for all residential uses. So, even though it's zoned business, you can build a residence there without having to have a commercial use involved.
But they're gonna pay the higher, yeah.
I'm sorry, Councilman Schaefer.
So, for this lot, it was assessed at the right price.
Per the, per the, it was assessed at the correct unit price, per what the assessor said in his email.
Yes. Um, so, if we were to wait until an assessor came to town to like redo assessments in November, we wouldn't necessarily expect there to be a different price.
The unit price may not change, um, however, they would take into account physical factors of the lot. That could then, that's where I was saying that typically, there should be a base unit price, and then there's either deductions or additions based on either, um, bad conditions of the lot, or then, or it's increased due to improvements such as structures. So, it could go up or down, um, but, uh.
So, and there, and I think there is a swamp that's on the card for this lot already, right? So, there already are some physical features.
Yeah, so, I don't know, I don't know when that was, um, put on there, um, but yeah, so, it has the unit price of $5, which then gives it a basic land value of, uh, $28,420, which then receives a 30% discount because of these quote-unquote swamp.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, it is already being, um, given that discount for those conditions, based on this tax card.
And I, I probably shouldn't say this, but my card also says there's swamp, and there is no swamp. We'll tell the taxes to do that. But yeah, that lot, this stuff has been reworked and filled years ago, so those are pretty old cards. I, may I continue, or is somebody?
Yeah, Councilman Baylor.
I guess, I think we need to, I don't know how you can, when you know the lot sold for $75,000, you divide that by two, that comes out to a, a value of 37,500 each. How do you argue that? I think what I'd like to see is, um, I don't want to say fault, there was a misunderstanding, there was a mistake made on this. Do we have any recourse to give them, um, some relief somehow? I don't, that's, for me, that's the question. I don't know how you can get away from the evaluation, it is what it is.
Um, Councilman Allison, and then we'll let the planner speak.
I guess I don't picture exactly where this is. Are any of those six lots have businesses on them currently? The six lots that you're talking about?
One of them does.
I don't know if there's active businesses, but there's non-residential uses on them, such as like, you know, warehouses or sheds and stuff, um, but as someone else pointed out, some of them do, one of them at least for sure has a residence on it, um, but whether there's active, you know, businesses, I'm not certain.
Okay, I just, uh, just a, a thought is whether or not it's zoned properly, or could be rezoned, um, to get to the less, the cheaper rate, uh, but, uh, I guess to, to answer Tom's question on the, um, oh, can you argue with the $75,000 value, he may not have offered 75,000 had he known it was only half a lot, um, half of what he thought he was buying for the 75,000, so.
That's what I was gonna add in, um, the applicant would say that that $75,000 price was with the assumption that it was one lot.
And that's why I divided it by two.
Yeah.
So, that comes out to 37.5 per lot.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm with you on that, I, you know, that we don't have a whole lot of options as a council, per, per our code, um, on what to do, you know? We have to be legitimate on the value, we can't just arbitrarily decide a, a price or a, a discount to give, um, uh, I too want to be fair, uh, and I don't want to discourage anybody from, from investing in the community, for sure, so, if there's a way that we can, can work out to make it more reasonable, that's what I suggest, you know, if, if, if it was 2.5, if, if it was zoned residential and not commercial, then, then it would certainly be a different value, um, but, anyway, that, that's just my thought on it.
Councilman Gleason.
So, I think the relief would probably have to come from the seller, you know? I mean, I don't know how that went, but you, if you could negotiate with who you bought it from and say, hey, it's kind of a terrible deal, because they thought they owned the land too, you know? So, uh, but I would, I don't think the city has a whole lot of, I mean, we just discussed it with the previous motion, so I don't think we have a whole lot of, regardless of how we personally feel about it, I think that it would, you'd have to go back to the seller and say, hey, can I have some of my money back? You know?
Um, I'm just wondering if it would be useful to go to the planner for a minute, and then back to council's discussion?
Yeah, I was just gonna, um, say that after looking at our code, the way that we're required to determine fair market value, and then also after consulting, um, with our legal representative, um, the only way to lower it tonight would be to go with just straight assessed value, and remove that 11% sales ratio, because we're not required to do that, our code says that we can use assessed value, so that would lower it to Otherwise, the other options would be to halt, pause the negotiations, see what happens after assessment, reassessment of the area, and see if that adjusts the property one way or another. Otherwise, um, I mean, someone could also get a licensed appraiser to do, uh, that, but again, I don't believe that that would necessarily be in the benefit of the applicant, um, but that could also be an option.
Okay. Um, Councilman Baylor?
Well, you might have, you might have answered my question, because I, I guess my thoughts were, I don't think the city bears responsibility, it's unfortunate, but I also think probably every one of us would love to figure out a way to give relief. And then that was, my question is like, could we check with legal? These are pretty unusual circumstances, is there some wording, is there a way around that we could come up with due to X, Y, and Z, where you can lower the price? I don't know if we could do that, is that something we could, if we concur with that, is that something we could run by the lawyer, but maybe?
We do have legal on the phone.
Oh, well, first of all, does, in my, I don't want to speak for everybody, is everybody kind of on the same lines, or what are we thinking?
Yes, I think if there's a legal, um, opinion. So, Holly is on the phone?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm here, and can you all hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you, Holly.
Oh, no, of course, um, I agree with everything that the planner has presented tonight. Unfortunately, there are ways that a city can provide a, I would say, a relief to a individual based on what they see as sort of a municipal error, but it doesn't show up in the, the value of the property, right? The, we cannot change the value of the property because of the very rigid protection that the public has afforded under your fair market value, uh, determination provision. So, that has to stay, and I know that planner worked really hard to figure out what the bottom of fair market value could possibly be on this property and still be legally defensible, hence the waving of the, uh, sales ratio. And I, and after looking at, doing a little research, that seems to be defensible under the law, in my opinion. So, that really is your quote-unquote discount, because that sales ratio on an assessed value is really, you're really pushing the bottom of that fair market value determination, but you're not violating it. So, I guess the answer would be, if you want to find some way to give someone money, um, because you think that they were harmed by, um, a mistake that the city made, or a misunderstanding, or whatever it might be, we would have to come up with a justification to do that outside of and separate from this process and the sale price mainly. Anybody have any questions, or need a little?
I think we're gonna continue the discussion?
I was just gonna go in a little different direction, because Dave brought up a pretty interesting point, that I suspect there's gonna be three people on here that when their property tax is double, uh, when Arnie gets this sorted out, we're gonna hear from them. So, it's, aside from this corner lot on the right-hand side, which I think is PJ's, I'm not sure if that's, I'm not allowed to say his name, but whatever, he's a, he's a carpenter. There's houses on two of them, so re, what would happen if we made that residential in there? Do we got the goose to do that?
There's.
Well, I would say, um, I would warn council that, well, that might be, there might be considerations regarding rezoning and, uh, and changes in that regard. This would not be the meeting to discuss those at, because if you discuss, um, they're triggered by, uh, this issue, the city becomes more vulnerable to say a rezoning, or what we call a spot zoning, um, allegation. So, I, I'm, it, it's a creative concept, and looking and making sure that your properties are zoned the way that, uh, reflects reality, that's always a good thing to do, but not tonight.
I always get you going.
Councilman Gard, did I say?
You did.
So, to be in a legally defensible position and do what we're supposed to do by law, we would be able to change our motion to basically number two on page 154, to where we offer it, um, for the appraised value minus the.
Don't tack on the sales ratio.
The sales ratio, and then also give, um, Mr. Hager, Mr. Miss Hager, the option of waiting until we get it reassessed. Do you see if there's any adjustment in November?
Yeah, the, the four options there, the only ones, um, that are able to possibly lower it, uh, number two would definitely lower it, um, option three could potentially lower it, um, based on what happens when the assessor comes and looks at that area. Um, there's also number four, but again.
Well, we, we could do a combination of two and three, though, we can come, combine both of those and give them the option of waiting. They could either purchase it now for the 26,4, or they could wait until after the appraiser comes to town, and then there's, there's an adjustment made because of the 20% or 30% or whatever was brought up in the others, then we have a licensed appraiser saying.
Assessor.
Assessor. Excuse me, the other A-word.
The only, um, the only snag in that is that if that assessment does raise it above the 26,4, we would have to go with that higher value, because that 26,4 would no longer be the fair market assessed, uh, assessed value.
Okay.
Yeah.
I under, I understand that, I hadn't thought about that, but I understand, it makes sense.
It's freaking confusing.
This is Councilman Meyer.
Councilman Meyer.
Um, one thought that I had, because I don't see the assessed value going down, I, I see that as a gamble, um, I don't think, I think cross, um, property assessments have just gone up, and probably from the indication of what the assessor had said, and, um, all these property cards, is they probably are gonna all be increased, um, they're probably too low. But, um, one idea or thought that I had is if we could go with the assess, offer the assessed value of the 26,400, and then maybe space it out over a period of time, um, where they do a long payment plan to pay it off, where it wouldn't have to be all one lump sum, or how do we do, um, land sales, like what period of time? Because I know that we do, do different negotiations of how long that they're gonna be paid off that value.
Yeah, that, that could be done, it doesn't have to be an outright sale, it could be a lease situation where it's then paid off, um, through some, through a, uh, you know, contractual agreement, so it wouldn't necessarily have to be an upfront, um, you know, all at once.
Yeah, typically, those are five years, correct?
The ones that I've seen, yes. At least, the ones I've seen here, yeah. Um, again, we could discuss other terms, but yeah, that's, that's what I've seen typically done here so far.
Councilman Gard.
Would it be Jermaine at this point in time, after the petitioner's been waiting here, listening to us discuss, let him get up in front of the mic and tell us what he thinks about some of the stuff he's heard tonight, or?
Yes.
We just want to keep this council talk?
Yeah, it's council in concurrence.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Hager, would you try and set the table?
Can I make one quick comment?
Sure, Councilman Baylor.
So, just, you know, your, your, uh, the property assesses property by recent sales, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, if you do the math here, you got $75,000, let's minus the 11%, um, help me out with whatever they call that.
Sales ratio.
Sales ratio. Now, you got $66,750, if you divide that by two, that comes out to $33,000 per lot assessment, $33,300. So, getting back to somebody's question, their point of, well, if you could take the $26,000, or if you gamble and wait for another assessment, I don't see how you can come in under, under the $33,000, so, it's kind of a gamble, so, I don't know.
Do you really think that he's gonna raise from 5.00, when the guy next door is at 2.25?
That's not the point. We wouldn't have purchased both properties.
Right.
At $35,000 for one lot.
Right.
And, and.
We only bought, we bought two for the quantity. We didn't want half, we still don't want half.
Right.
And the reason we went for it, because we owned the property up above, we needed access to that property.
So, you're, so you dividing it by half is throwing out the window, because we wouldn't have went that route.
And I'll guarantee you, the assessor has never been there to assess his property, because he's charged me for a shack on there, been paying Warren for a shack on the city property for over 20 years, um, there's just no doubt about it, he, he's never seen his property. He did talk to Warren years ago, never mentioned that there was two separate lots, always been used to one lot. That's why the city manager, city planner, gave me all the information, the pictures, the this, the that, the lot we got, saying this is the property, lot, block, block six, Lot 10. I took it to the bank, I mean, it was, uh, I had everything on paper.
We've never seen east or west until this summer.
That is, the survey was done in June.
Never seen east or west. We have numerous papers from the city, Warren has numerous papers from the city, and from the person he purchased it from, Sven Asp. There was nothing, nothing, and we can bring that all to you. Never on anything said east or west until this summer.
Do you believe if it was a person that owned that section of property at that unit rate, would dispute it? No, it's owned by the city, so who can dispute it? All it does is raise the property levels around there. So, you know, it's, this is something that was done on paper, wasn't looking at a property, they just raised the unit, because that's what they do. They drive by, say, okay, well, nobody's there, a vacant lot, um.
Kim, we, we understand your dilemma, we all understand your dilemma that you're in, but as, for the city, we can't just give you the city's chunk of that property.
I would, I would hope that the city council would be fair and just give it to me at the rate that is right on the other side of the fence.
I think that rate's going up, Kim, unfortunately, from what the.
Well, it's going up, we, what am I supposed to do down here?
We're discussing this today, not tomorrow. It's like, we're buying the car today, not tomorrow.
We've been fighting this since March, which is one thing. We've been fighting this since March, which is one thing, it's attorney, then a survey, then an assessor. How long ago did you say the assessor was going to be here? That was over two months ago. Still, we don't have an assessor.
And how long has Warren's property been assessed at point, five point? How long has he been paying that high rate and nobody else in the neighborhood?
He was paying 4.88, never complained because he considered it was a total lot. He was paying the same with everybody else.
Why, why just that one piece of property is at that rate, high rate? Nobody else. Don't give me that because the other people is assessed wrong. Come on, for how long have they been assessed wrong? Why is, why is one person being penalized? Is he going to be reimbursed for the money that he has paid the city? I want, I think you say that the city is not to be held responsible. Well, in my view, you are. For, for, for the past 30 years, the people of that property did not know that there was an east or a west. And it was because you didn't inform them of that. And then somebody's paying this high rate when his neighbor's not? Come on, somebody has to be held responsible.
And it was me that brought it to the attention of Tina because I started, I'm tearing down town, clearing brush this and that, and I started looking at the paperwork. I said, what's this portion thing here? Well, I never, you know, I never read down far enough to see it, but you know, it's in survey terms. I'm, I went on what's in black and white, what the city told me. And, and I actually specifically asked Lee Stabby, does the city have any interest in this property or anything? No, glad to ask, no. And this little bit of property, you're saying, oh, it's better not to cost $75,000. Well, if you take out that, where the fence goes down there, there's a creek, there's a culvert, there's 18 feet in between the fence and the center line. There's enough room for a road. So if you just took this at the 2.25 that everybody else seems to, you know, have in the neighborhood, I'm glad you can enjoy it, but it just doesn't make any sense. And I would think the city council would have a little function. I don't know.
Councilman Baylor.
So you can correct me if I'm wrong. It sounds like you would prefer that our recommendation be number three, that pause the negotiations so the assessor comes up to Cordova for yearly assessment and have the lot reassessed, use, claim he hasn't walked on it. I guess that would be the way to clarify that and proceed with the offer based on the updated value of sales ratio, which we're more than happy to do if you want.
I'd like to see it. I mean, this has been going on way too long. I would prompt the assessor to be here. It's going to be wrapped up October 6th. In between the attorneys, the surveyors, this and that, it's just been one drug out thing. Now you want to drag it out a little further. I don't think you're sticking your neck out to sell me this at the price that would be evaluated just using the figures on the other side of the fence. Now who's going to dispute that? I mean, I'll tell you who's going to dispute things is when the property values double. If you, no, never mind.
Hey, I think we should.
I would really like to have my questions answered, so maybe not tonight, but tomorrow or the next day.
Okay. Is there any more discussion at this time? Do we want to amend or motion, Allison?
Yeah, you know, it was clear from the warranty deed back in 2002 that the Asps knew that it was a portion of the lot and the warranty deed that Chapel signed in February of '21. Also, it was clear that it was a portion. So I think I would like to amend the motion to go with option two, I believe, was the, yeah, to remove the sales ratio. So strike number one and go with number two. And then if, if they want to buy it at 26,400, they can. If they don't, then we can go back to the drawing board. But that gives them the option to finish it tomorrow if they want to. And if they want to wait until later, they can also do that, so.
Were you suggesting number two?
I was making amendment to go with item two, strike number one and go with number two.
I second that motion.
Number two.
To offer it for 26,400. Take off the, take off the additional 11% or whatever that is, go with 26,400 as the value, which in my opinion is, is about all we can do at this point in time as far as what our requirements are per code. And I regret that things weren't done differently 50 years ago, but it's clear from the warranty deeds that the information wasn't kept a secret from anybody. And, and I think that's the best that we can do at this point in time and to move things along. If the purchaser wants to slow things down, they certainly don't have to sign any, any kind of agreement, but this at least gives them that option.
Good point.
Councilman Baylor, to your second.
No, I agree.
Is.
This is Councilman Meyer.
Councilman Meyer.
Um, yeah, I'm in support of this amendment and I would just also like to add that if there's anything that we can do to lighten the load, I would encourage that to look at it or work with, work with them to see if a longer payment period or just anything that we can do to help with it. I agree with what was said. I don't think that the city is liable, but I really, really feel for, feel for them. This is not a comfortable position to be in. And if we could do something different, if this was privately owned and not city-owned, I'm sure it would have a completely different outcome. We, our hands are just really tied in this situation, but if there's anything that we can do within the assessed value, I would encourage exploring that.
Can I amend the amended motion? If I can. So let me just, I'd like to amend the amended motion to, to have it read, remove the sales ratio and off the lot at the current assessed value of $26,400 to lease or purchase. And then that would give them that option of.
Friendly amendment taken.
Okay. Just for clarification before I call on you, Susan, could you read the motion that's now on the table back to us?
I guess just move to remove the sales ratio and offer the lot at the current assessed value of $26,400. Well, for, offer to lease, offer that they can lease or purchase the lot for 26,400.
Okay. So Councilman Gard, and then I'll go to the planner.
I'd like to try a friendly emotion amendment to the motion. Give the purchaser the option of number three, pausing the negotiations until the assessor comes to town. And I believe it's November we're talking about now if they want.
Um, yeah, sorry. I just was informed that if we did go with option two, if when the assessor comes to town, the city can preserve the right to credit the purchaser if the assessed value does actually indeed get reduced.
Okay, that would, that would accomplish the same thing and it wouldn't put the purchaser at risk of a raise.
Yeah, so we could lock in the 26,400 and if it does get reduced, then we could offer a credit for whatever that reduction is.
And council, this is Holly, just to dovetail on what Kevin's saying. I, I've never done that before, but I think that that might be the creative solution that works here. And I think that we can, we can draft a provision that will be in full compliance with the code so long as we are clear that there was a difference in assessment value at the time of its determination. And so that's justifying this conditional kind of credit.
I'm in.
Councilman Allison.
Yeah, and I guess just so Mr. Hager understands clearly why we put the lease thing in there so that you have time to, to purchase. You'd make payments over five years and those lease payments would go towards the purchase of the purchase price of the property. We do that with a lot of different properties around town. It just gets, makes you not have to come up with 26,400 today. You could come up with that over time, so.
At no interest.
At no interest, correct.
It's at no interest?
We would have to make sure legal, yeah, we would.
Said that.
I have a totally different question than Kevin over here on what Arnie can do.
I'm not sure about that interest provision, but I, you know, we can look into it and make sure that it goes as far as it can under the law, but I'm thinking that there's not, we're not going to be able to waive that.
I'm good with that.
So you can close it at 26,400, but then if the assessor comes and it goes lower, you'll get credited the amount back if it does go lower. But you could still close it and start doing what you want to do immediately. That's what's on the table.
The discussions I've had with Arnie, he says that he hadn't seen the new map and stuff. He would have looked, yeah. And he says he had this, when I got out of it, he's saying that, no, that's assessed value, that's not like that.
I'd call for the question on amended motion.
Okay, Mr. Baylor, thank you. Roll call.
Does everybody know what you're voting on?
This is on the amendment, correct?
Well, we kind of just changed, right?
Was it not?
I think we got rid of the first one and then we.
I made the original motion.
Yeah.
Which, which I could withdraw, withdraw. I originally put on number one.
You can just call them all friendly amendments.
Okay, it's remove the sales ratio and offer the lot, offer to lease or purchase the lot at the current assessed value of 26,400. And also, after it gets assessed, it can be, if it goes lower, it will be credited back to the purchaser. Okay, that's what we're voting on. All in one fell swoop. Tom Baylor.
Yes.
Jeff Gard.
Yes.
Ann Schaefer.
Yes.
David Allison.
Yes.
David Gleason.
Yes.
Melina Meyer.
Yes.
Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you for sticking around, Mr. Hager and Kim.
Can I do a point of privilege, please, for a restroom break?
I was going to try and get us to executive session, but yeah, we could.
I can wait.
Okay, let's power through. Number 17, discussion of COVID-19 emergency response. Seeing, seeing none. Pending agenda and CIP list calendar elected and appointed officials, Susan.
All right, hang on. I thought I had a note. Darn it, where's my note? Oh, right here. Is the five o'clock next week on Wednesday, first budget work session, okay with everyone?
Nope.
That's fine.
Can't wait.
Yeah.
Give us, give us time. It's not with a regular meeting afterwards, you know?
Is it five to?
Well, I mean, you can go as long as you want, but we could say five to seven as the max if that's.
Five o'clock on Wednesday?
Yes. And Helen is trying her best to get you her draft ASAP, but she says by Monday for sure.
Anybody interested in chipping in for pizzas?
I mean, we could feed you. We could feed you if it's a Monday at five.
That's like the best idea.
That's a good idea.
I'll be eating Taco Bell. I won't be here and probably won't be able to call, but I can review it.
Okay, okay.
Audio.
And it'll just be audio because we're not going to YouTube and all that.
Yeah, and my, my plan is for that first one is for me to go over it just to really lay out the landscape so you understand. And then you'll have an opportunity before the next work session to really dig in on your own and bring questions back and.
No problem. As long as I have the documents, I'll be in, at Seattle at Virginia Mason that Wednesday and Thursday, so.
Okay, easy. Thank you.
Susan, I will be actually volunteering for the Elastor, the Electrify Conference next Wednesday. They finish at five, so I'll be.
Oh, are they in this room? Oh, yeah.
Yes, you're in the education room.
Oh, we're going to be in Ed room. Right, right, right.
So I might be a minute late, but I don't know if Clay's coming, so.
How about 5:15?
Yeah, 5:15 would be good.
Okay, we can do that. We can do that. And then, you know, I guess at each budget work session, we'll talk about the next one because we've got it all on a schedule, but like if times conflict, we can go that way.
And it might be who of us, maybe at that meeting, if not this one, to discuss everyone's schedules for the rest of the year so that we make sure we have a quorum for the final vote.
Sure. Does anybody have travel plans in November or December?
I do.
Yes.
I hope it's after December 15th.
Be a lot of phone time, I think.
Okay. Is anybody not going to be able to be here on December 15th for the vote to approve the budget? That's kind of the most important one.
Can I call in?
I mean, it can be done by phone, absolutely.
I won't physically be here.
But we'll make sure we have, you know, a quorum.
I will be here physically.
Okay. I think that's all we need to know, really. I mean, the budget work sessions will be important, but as much calling in as you can and then reviewing audio if you have to.
So I'm going to be gone from the 7th to 27th and I.
Of November?
Of November. So I don't, and I don't want to call in.
Okay.
But I also don't want to have an unexcused absence.
Oh, well.
It's work related.
Oh, okay. He's going to be in Hawaii for work?
Yeah, right.
Is he gillnetting over there?
I'm starting it.
Yeah, right.
Just, and then just asking too, is it, is it, if it's possible, the will of council, some of these budget meetings strictly starting at six o'clock just because somebody's going to be like four hour time difference?
It's, um.
Yeah.
Oh, you're going to be all the way east?
Yeah.
I'll be central.
So I think we did have them mostly at five or six. I put them at six on the nights that it's before the regular meeting, thinking, you know, we don't want to be here from five till 11.
Right.
Yeah.
For those, since there are going to be a bunch of us traveling and doing things, can we figure out how technologically to get the big board up on the screen?
YouTube.
If we're going to be doing numbers on the board and stuff, it makes it easier to.
Sure. On the ones that we're able to have here, because otherwise that's, that's going to be almost impossible. And there's Board of Fish, the first.
Yeah, we have Board of Fish.
That's going to be, we're going to be scrambling. We may be, who knows?
Where we can.
We, we could potentially have a Zoom meeting upstairs, I think.
Yeah, and I think you can project upstairs too as well.
Andrew has said that that's a possibility for December.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
Councilman Gard.
I was going to ask this earlier, but I kind of missed my slot and then didn't want to wedge it in later, but the redistricting stuff, are we going to have a meeting to sit down all of us together and decide what we want to support so we've got a clear, concise voice from the council on this?
We can certainly do it for the first meeting in November. After you guys have had a chance to review with the redistricting board here, they'll be going over their, their options and explaining and, and listening to feedback. Then on the third, we can bring everyone together and make a communication of some kind formal around that before the decision's made on the 10th.
We don't need to have that before they show up to talk.
No, because they just want, they want to hear from the public. They don't, they're not planning on presenting to council. They want to hear from individuals and. They want to hear from individuals and community members. So I think for those of us in the room, I think there are six proposals. The ones we are looking most, with most interest is staying with Kodiak as a voting block because they have similar issues to us. But more importantly, their representatives are power players in Juneau, and it's to our advantage. The question on whether Whittier's included or Valdez included or Seward's included or, you know, Kachemac Bay East communities are included. I don't know how that impacts us or not. And quite frankly, each of those communities has their own ideas about it. So I yet don't know what they are. But for us, if we can stay with Kodiak, it will always be to our advantage. So of the six plans, there, I think there are five of them that have a sting with Kodiak and one of them that doesn't.
So maybe on the November 3rd meeting, we'll bring an open-ended resolution that then we'll discuss and plug in one of the plans.
Yep.
And then we'll give that to them before the 10th, obviously, on the 4th.
On the 4th, right.
Okay, are we ready?
I'm worried about one of these going after Louise or some portion of them.
A wanting her, you mean? No.
There's, there's.
Yeah. All right, Ann has to go to the bathroom.
We have to go to.
We still have council comments.
Wait, wait, no. Can we just do if, audience participation? If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak? Okay, so now let's take a.
We want to do council comments before executive session?
I can't think straight.
I think the only comment anyone needs to make is, I have to go pee.
Yeah, that would be fine.
Comments and.
Let's pause and take a break and then we'll come back to council comments.
Recession at 9:22. I just had two cups of coffee before the. I emptied my water.
My soda's about empty too. It's time to go.